Hold order the June sixth, twenty twenty-three. Meeting of the City of Columbia, City Council. Uh, we will have P N give the invocation and then we'll all rise and join in the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Lord bless those that hold office in the government of our city. Help them to do their work in a spirit of wisdom, kindness, and justice. And to use their authority to serve our citizens faithfully. In your name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the Republic, where it stands, my own nation and my own home. And to this people, we are never leaving.
You have me call the roll?
Becker?
Here.
Carter?
Here.
McBean?
Here.
Liston?
Here.
Tilio?
Here.
Anna?
Here.
Noel?
Here.
Willard?
Here.
Hudson?
Here.
We received a copy of the May ninth minutes of the special joint meeting held with Salem. City Council on again, May ninth. If any questions or comments about those minutes. There are none, they'll be adopted as submitted. We also received the copy of the minutes for the regular meeting held on May sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. Any questions or comments on those minutes? There are none, they will also be adopted. I have no reading of communications or I do not have reports of commissions and boards. So we'll move to the part of the agenda, recognition of person desiring to appear. First, we have Blake Stitch, Director of Operations at Ted athletic. To discuss the much strut five K run and what could be helped with September sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. All right.
As a fellow, we got some more batteries and we should be in most of you guys' cells there. Yeah. All right, thank you for having me today. My name is Blake, again Director of Operations, H R for the Athletics. I'm joined today with Mike World, Barry World, managing ownership there behind me. I'm one of the city council for meeting today along with Chief and everyone else in the community. Uh, my agenda can be a brief overview of the much truck that we're showing the plan here for September sixteenth. Uh, the timeline, race route, we can go over some safety and some communication along with it. And then uh, security insurance are there for you guys to read over as well. Athletics is a forty-five thousand square foot train facility. Uh, we brand new to the community, essentially been around for close to a year. We saw it over September of twenty twenty-two. And uh, we're glad to be here, glad to see you guys here and also support the community we uh, we live in. Um, we are here today to present our athletics first annual much shot five K run. Uh, profits will go to the Youngstown Humane Society. Uh, and then event costs will go along with it will be covered within that uh, money wise. Looking at it right now, we're meeting with City Hall um, upon approval. So June sixth, we're gonna start to push this out. Um, if we go to the race route here. We're gonna go to. We're starting athletics originally crossing our outset in into Firestone Farms. Uh, with that being said, there might raise some concern at the safety issues, so we do have an alternative route. Just starting at the town circle at our zone farms. This will lead into uh, a whole duration of the race finish at the town circle. Um, from there, one second. And then from there, we're looking to have a brief overview of sponsorships on hand and vendors. Um, get together, look at K one oh five there as far as the expansion of it's. Um, all of everyone else who there is for sponsorships. Um, so briefly, I mean, I made any questions on that, you guys have the outline in front of you. Our timeline registrations will be athletics to his beforehand, so that kind of alleviates the whole settlement of, you know, crowd control. Um, besides that, we're just here to see and talk about the race route and concerns and the issues I can answer upon.
The the race, this new race road, because this the the original race routes weren't gonna work, right? Have you talked to the chief about this alternative route yet?
Not yet.
Okay.
I did talk to Lance today, he gave me a call and that's why, you know, it worked to say, okay. What can I go about a different way of doing it, have some safety, you know, concerns being answered, right? Um, providing the safety too, on the race route, the day of, we'll have Pacers. So first, second, third, first one will be the front pack. Uh, the other one in the middle and back end, so you're having a certain issues, you think about weather on hand, right? Let's go to the weather to be, and you're shot at that, right? But we want to keep everyone safe, have a good time here. Um, on site, we know it's not a nice society to play with the pups, you know, enjoy, give back to their charity. To also bring to this rich foundation community that ours has always has offered. I'm looking a part of everyone, I know we're glad to be here and just make a nice goodbye day for the community to enjoy essentially.
That was a great presentation, Blake, any questions? Comments?
Chief. Is part of his property is on out of the city limits, isn't it?
No, that's all been.
It has, okay, all right, I just wasn't sure, there was a while there that there was some questioning, thank you.
Hey, so what is the route we're talking about?
You can say hey, alternative race? Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, the alternative race, that's one.
It'll start in the town circle, correct?
Yeah.
So it's in the beginning there, second soul will be very designated where it's gonna start, where it's gonna finish. It's actually not like a big loop, you're gonna have to back trace where you came from. And then just for the fire cell links, we're gonna offer additionally along the foundation, we're gonna send us some coupons, invite them over too. So there's a whole day of, you know, giving back, but also to say who's athletics, we're there to obviously publicize us, but also the community that we serve, right? Um, additionally, for a race route, whether it's athletics personally and or a dog cleanup group will retrace their footsteps. So those fire cell links, uh, you know, community homeowners, homeowners, we're gonna clean up after ourselves. So essentially we're gonna invite them over, have a fun time, but make sure we maintain a good foundation for community, we're gonna miss race now.
Questions? I just must say that we appreciate athletics. Being in Columbia, you're a great addition to the city and we appreciate your efforts to work with the city and I just make that comment. If there are any questions or comments, we're gonna. Need to approve this?
Yeah.
So I moved, I moved to approve the alternative race route that's been presented by athletics for their race.
Chief doesn't.
Oh, yes. Pending chief's approval.
Second.
Yeah. Second of the motion, or the second, okay. Any questions? Should be a fun day.
Yeah, I hope to see you guys a lot there, mobile offices, so be awesome for the community.
Good, are you gonna have ambulances out there?
Yes, we have to coordinate that, this is the background work of things, um, but we'll have on site all the necessities and safety.
Well, I'm thinking, I'm thinking the ambulance is more, we're gonna go out there.
No, it's good, chief gave a thumbs up. First good.
Chief's good, okay. Okay, well, thank you, you can have a seat and we will take the vote, call the roll.
Becker?
Yes.
Sauer?
Yes.
McBean?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Tilio?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Thank you very much, guys, appreciate it. Next on our agenda is Brian Frederick, owner of the Eldritch Bazaar, to discuss holding a business grand opening event. We held in sixteen seventeen nineteen.
Hi, um, I'm Brian Frederick, it's nice to meet you all, I've met a few of you. But for those who have not met me, uh, I'm a longtime member of Columbia, I've lived here since, oh, nine, say. Uh, real quick, just make sure I gave what that guy with the package information you have to have.
They have a.
Should, yeah.
Yeah.
We'll work past that. Um, to make it long for a short, I have been going to bet at the game right in favor of the game.
Well, that was good.
Well, so anyways, um, I have been going to contest the game, so I'm actually probably October, so I'm trying to be the last day of September. That was my community goal this time. I did everything I could to support them when I was there, whether I had to be a volunteer or any games, et cetera. With that in mind, they sent me before the charter closed, I left saying, there's no way I can fix this. And they asked me to run. When that's the game's closed, I knew that I would have to take over and hopefully someone one day would open the store. And as months and a year passed, I realized that was happening. In March of twenty-two, I found myself in transit better and I thus succeed that announcement. But secure a location at exactly two seventeen South of the street. Uh, previously I was the white male. With that in mind, um, I have had extraordinary level of success and support for both of my community and some people outside of it. Very excited for my business. With that in mind, I have done a lot of logistical analysis with the vice that having a grand opening, A, on one day and B, in just building is completely. One, I spoke with multiple members of the city and various elements, whether it be Officer Holy and Tech Edwards for private security. Or uh, looking to August, who I think he's. So on and so on. Uh, my point is the bridge this Tuesday, as I decide best way to go about this, but for not having two hundred people in a single barn as for a box. But also to take advantage of most of this is to have a whole brand opening. That mind, that in front of you, which should have been totally good, but that's okay. Slices, my original plan for layout now has been edited slightly to uh, compact it a little bit. It will not be a six tent in the back closest to that parking area. Um, initially the parking is no longer the only place in the back, but I have spoken, turned across the street. I think they have given me full permission to use our parking lot during my break. Um, additionally, I have, again, like I said, talk with Officer Holy and also Edwards about that security, they actually said it probably would be necessary. But nonetheless, August, uh, in the autumn, we're gonna be involved with that presenting. Um, additionally, um, I will be sending, of course, next week to actually grant itself. Um, but I wanted to get this out of there and if I apologize, I, I know this will be coming up. But nonetheless, yeah. I talked about.
So you had mentioned a food truck or were you gonna? Okay, okay, I think that was one of the main reasons we're, we wanna have you here, but uh, also to maybe kick it off with the press that, you know, to advertise for your business.
So we would have to approve the tents on the front end, right, that's about all we'd be approving, and chief, do you have any concerns or objections?
Sorry, what was the address? Two seventeen South. So just pass the post office, um, via industry, then who gets that part of compliance and then you send it to the state.
Yeah, I, I think. I mean, the main reason we had him come is for food trucks. Um, I don't think anybody, you know, if somebody has a tent outside their business for a weekend. You know, we're gonna, we're gonna welcome that, so, right?
I should mention that map does explain that some tents should be held on either parallel buildings, I already talked to Kenny, the homeowner next to me, and. We ran one of the building next to it, so we also might have, they all said they're using it, like.
Okay.
So we won't pretend on that, but those.
He gave the thumbs up too, so, uh, I move to approve as presented.
Actually, I think we need to approve is the food truck, because there.
He's not doing.
He's not doing that, okay.
Okay, all right.
So I don't know that there's anything to approve. Cause he's not blocking streets or anything.
Well, he's gonna be on the sidewalk, I mean, I, that in theory could be a thing, I guess, so this way we're clear, I, but.
What I can mention is I'm expecting a very conservative, almost nihilistic estimate of thirty-five people, I opened the door at two hundred. And this is mine, I do wanna mention that I'm giving the other charge.
Okay. Just, we, if we have them.
I move to approve as as submitted.
Okay, we're looking for a second.
Second.
There's a second, okay, now we can.
That's all right.
I do have a question, I know, I know you were planning or uh, planning commission a while back.
Yes, that did fall through for a handful of reasons, primarily our private, the largest private desk were backed down last minute, but I essentially got what I need to write the rest of it, so.
But you need to come to planet commission.
Yeah, next week.
Okay. So. Are you there?
Yeah. Let, let me change my motion then to uh. Include pending, pending planning commission approval of the business.
So if I understand that the reason for the planning commission second is because originally we were planning on having a food truck, which would get councils consent. An approval for that. Planning commission, however, needs to know that you're doing the thing like this, and we want to preserve business and have locations, so typically. That would be the first step, but I think, you know, the reason makes sense why he's here first, because the food truck, but since we're not doing that. I think approving it as submitted, then the planning commission approval. Probably satisfies everything the council. Okay, so what?
I modified my motion.
What, what we approve, wait, stop, let, let's wait, I was wanting to get the motion.
Okay.
But now we're talking.
So I'm just modifying the motion to include pending planning commission approval of the business.
Second.
Second, now, I'm sorry. Talk amongst yourselves, I'm, I'm just not sure what we're approving. It's.
Uh, can I even get the perspective? Sure, so to clarify, sir, um, Mark, Mr. H, um, I had already gone and wanted to get my approval last May for the business opening. But that was too late, so I moved it to chief. That alone did separate, I already had that planned out and talked to Alex. This came up actually later, but of course.
Right.
Um, because I mentioned I was prepared by food truck, this was supposed to be. Food truck, cause I said I no longer have, I simply ordering all of course. Um, to supply food for the events. Um, but yeah, just make sure that's fair.
So I guess my answer is because he, I mean, he's gonna have tents on the public sidewalk. That was my thought, why would we wanna approve it, that way there's no question. He's got permission to use the sidewalk for that.
Well, the way he's planning on using it is a little bit different than what other businesses have done. Uh, but almost all businesses may, may give it on the sidewalk.
If this is actually tents out there for the duration of the event, so that's always, I mean, that I thought it would make sense to approve it. That way it's clear that he has that permission to use the sidewalk, the way he's played in using it.
Okay.
I just wanna be clear, please. Are there any other questions or comments on the motion? Do you have me call the roll?
Yes.
McBean?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Tilio?
Yes.
Anna? Yes.
Yes.
Thank you and good luck, Brian.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Good luck.
I'll be doing some of you soon. Uh, now, why have missions to leave with your assets?
You can leave.
Okay.
We don't want to hold you here. Okay, next we have Bonnie Hope Saunders, technology teacher Joshua Dixon. And Debbie Hines and Jake Roner from the Columbia and Fairfield Township Historical Society. Who discussed the history of Columbia slideshow made by Joshua Dixon, third graders.
Hello. Bonnie Saunders and I just said, I'll be great for for a document, it's. Um, probably ninety-seven, um, involved in the department, mentioned teacher. And uh.
You need a little closer than my. That's great.
Okay, I thought you said. And we, my philosophy when teaching technology, it's whether in school or in their life. And um, we've got the thing that they're developmentally ready for, I think, ready for work, so then when COVID came, we were. Um, all of a sudden, just pushed into little classrooms, we really, as teachers, began to recognize that. One of the beaches of class are the slide show feature. Um, how many of you took a big roll of paper and you made a little TV and you wrote it when you were little to show? This is like a modern version of that, so third grade, since they study the history of Columbia, we did ours on Columbia six three. Every student uh, made their own, so we voted as a class what we wanna do and um. This is the third year, this is the first year we were able to finish, have a class finished, so that was exciting. So when Debbie came to school, I'm like, you gotta see this, because the kids are just so proud of it. Um, but the things that they learn, they learn about history of Columbia, so when they go to the art, they're gonna say, oh. This was donated by Harvey S. Firestone, and when they pass the theater, they're gonna say, oh, this was um. Man is theater, we have that original picture, Debbie, historical society has applied so many pictures. Um, I had a student that was father works for the fire department, who gave us a picture, and if you see the one. In here, there is, you're gonna see it's shadows, somebody taking a picture of a picture, but hey, we're, we're thrilled because for so long. We had to just look for old pictures in general, and that's what you're gonna see in some of these pictures. Um, and then there's good terminology that, um, you know, they're brighter, it's supposed to, for example, that will border around there, we have to make it transparent. Uh, um, please pull your seal, thank you. The students kind of learn to right click to copy an image they had to learn to, because the pool, you can't right click, they had to take a screenshot of profits, so there was a lot of. Learning that what makes sense to them, because we actually had applied, if I would have just thought installation, they would not have grasped the value of it. So this is the slideshow, um. And. We have Joshua Dixon, Dr. Columbia, this is a picture they found, our roles was, our roles were, we couldn't have mountains, and we couldn't have um, beaches.
Oh, come on.
Like, we have beach, we have. So, I'm a picture. Uh, they talk about absence, and then once again, transparent with the wheel, the way that. Um, then they surveyed the, the land, we had to talk about how low heels surveyor tools versus modern laser. So uh, there was then and now, and how to serve for that, if it's not, it's easy to. And I know that said, I was more close to this, I thought we talked about, come out, we could find one, can we have one? And um, anyways, we talked about how they were mutually in a general storm, found some pictures with a general storm, we found some old stamps. But then the one interesting story that we found in our search was that Columbia had one of the first um. Postal delivery. Um, services because the postmaster was a rugby old man who did like people coming to his house, so the kids enjoy that story. People deliver and instead. Um, this is our first real picture of Columbia, and we talked about how um. That we talked about how those are the, the horse um, posts that they ditched the horses to, and this picture was probably dated because there's a car in there, it was new. That's our guess, we're trying to figure out what that. None of us can, so that even kind of.
I think it's gone.
What about that building?
It's gone too.
You could see the little door where somebody taking a picture, but this we were excited about, because it was. Before, we were just looking for old fire trucks and old pictures where we have the Columbia, and I'm sure it's not eighteen forty, but hey, it's Columbia, our targets, that we would. And we talked, if you notice, there's a picture background, so sometimes we have a solid background, the colors, as we, um, the picture is there, it goes well in. And uh, they love these pictures, we have four of these that were going to us, like. We drop in, a lot of them wanted the logos, we brought it in, pulled in with the new, we just love this, love this. Yes, I know that this is the nineteen nineteen, but I'm sure some players thought that. I'm defeated football team, and that's what we say, at least they're real Columbia people. And one of the students even picked out, it looks like we have um, an African American, so we, even back then, we were um, inclusive. Drop in, drop in. Instead of shop and shop, we open from the shop, yes, and you know, that means the um, this, um, it makes the students all feel. Um, like, as for other community, make them all. Um, and we're assuming that this library on Dean um, Road Street was going, but that library, that very nice history of theirs. Um, some kids even, for the story of the statue they stole and to be recovered. There's a lot of things, this is her favorite, where the bar and color, and they all know it before. I don't know what it is about Robert, they're all one. Here, we're talking about, like, we find the picture first, this is one where you have screenshot, shrink it. Um, but the boy in the background, we had to uh, move it to the back, so I talked about that before, but it doesn't take in until they need. So one thing nice about this, so they say he makes all those little things that we teach, like, they now they know why, they're not doing it to be neat, but. And Harvey S. Firestone. And. Uh, it's confusion to be careful of that. This was the grand opening. And they, like, once again, finding pictures like popcorn, this is on popcorn. So they love the boss, so everyone. This, it was a, this was the only thing we find about the sire online, that our school computers would allow us to go to, but then somebody posted something on Facebook, so the classes. We had uh, three classes that were a little bit behind this class, and they had so much more to pick them, so uh, somebody posted it on this is, this is Columbia. So I made copies and put it in, we're good. You know, the kids will be able to search Columbia in newspapers about, and about a lot, bottom line, we just have to be spraying, you know, that's right. Um, and then I talked about how, because that, this slide was about that, where they didn't replace it, and they're all familiar with this, and then hopefully, this is, you're getting Google shots. From the street, there's a lot of pictures out there, but if all of them have something, whether it's Super Bowl right now, Hogan, so we gotta check these through there, we gotta be on the growth. So this draws, I mean, I mean, they got the class the first thing they ask, it's hard to work on the slideshow, so they're so excited about Columbia, and we're just for that. And we talked about middle school, where they'll be going two years from when they did their slide shows, and how the students, maybe the parts of figures that they have. And how the Davis South Center School. Are aware, that long. We're not so, we have to be four, that's the building. That open, but it's how, I'm quite sure, that's. House was open several years prior to the.
Eighty-three, eighty-four, something like that. I think, I, I know it was open in eighty-six, because that's.
I think, I know it was open in eighty-six because that's graduate, right?
Yeah, that's funny. Graduated with a, somebody who owned it. So it was during school.
Yeah, cheeseburgers.
If there's something I left out, I mean, please let me or Debbie know because, I mean, if we can expand upon this, the more that they learn. This format where they're excited about it, this is another one of their favorites. They are shocked that this is what the library looked like then. Um because they've never seen it that way. I mean, it's like thirty uh two, um thirty-two years ago.
The old one still exists, so I guess you probably.
They're all, like, this is one of their favorites too. They all seem to go and look at it like, you know, I just think it's that. And watermelon of the lake is just such an awesome picture that. Thank you very much for the kinds of goodness because we're excited about it. Um all of those, this is just, all of them are different. Um some have a lot of throwing to do for comes to um visual design. But this is sorry, this is a way that they take what they learned from here and apply it to, it's like a way of doing the book for it.
That's an awesome presentation. That really is. Very nice. Thank you, Connie, for doing that. And it sounds like you're gonna be, you're talking about other pictures that are gonna have access. They're gonna continue to do this?
I hope so. I was just performing, I have to be recording, I mean, second, third, fourth, so I have to put it in. But it's like um a meaningful project, you know, that I want to.
And I think we should recognize that Debbie and Jay Groner do a fantastic job at the, we have a fantastic historical society. And uh those two people are just a wealth of knowledge and we appreciate your helping and they're working in so many. And Susan, I'm sorry. Yeah, Susan, open up. Thank you. Thank you very much. I didn't absolutely. Thank you. Very nice. Appreciate that. Next on the agenda is Tim Spiker to discuss fireworks at First Stone Park.
Hey, number one, I'd love to come in and give you guys a little bit of update on progress for this year. And if you have any questions or anything different that you need to do for this year. And of course, it's your ultimate consent to do so. This year, we're in one uh just as good as what we were last year. Uh we're actually a little bit ahead uh schedule on finding compared to what we were last year. So we're happy about that. Um we're gonna basically have the same identical um things that last year. Chris A B is coming again to do the main concert. And we have the Cockle Brothers as a concert for him. Between um Skydivers, all the contests. Uh we did next the pizza eating contest just because last year was so hard to get the pizza warmed up um to be able to eat. Because nobody looked for it to lie. And so, so we mixed that for this year. But um we actually added a second pickleball tournament because it was so popular last year. We had a second for uh people under that play on triple fifty-five and over. So we're excited about that. Um like I say, just wanted to see if you guys had any questions or concerns for this year and it uh be adorable to move forward.
We haven't seen anything from Park Board. Did you get Park Board approval?
I talked with them um probably, I don't know. It's been a month or so ago, can't even know that they ever officially voted on it. I just spoke with them on what we have to come in and at the time we were gonna try to do this, the permanent stage and put that in. Um but with the architectural uh delays and stuff that we came across that uh isn't happening for this year. So we should just like the stage we had last year.
Okay, um you're gonna have to get with Park Board and get their approval. That's, that's gonna be a must. They have to vote on it. And then, and they'll send that back to us. And timing is of the essence because Park Board doesn't meet until the fourth Monday. And then.
Wait a little bit.
Until after the Fourth of July.
Do we make a motion to approve attending approved by the Park Board?
Well, I'm, I'm sure we can, yeah. But, but that, that has to happen. I just want you to know that that's, that's the step you gotta take. So it shouldn't be difficult.
Yeah, I, I thought there was a vote on that, that's the last.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, well, we, we didn't get anything back, so, yeah.
I'll make that motion. We approve, approve of by the Park Board.
I'll second that motion.
Hey, this motion is second. The Fourth of July project, program, uh subject to the approval by.
Yeah, if they've already approved it, they don't have to approve it yet. We need to know.
Yeah, it was not approved.
Hey, uh Lance, any concerns in the planning?
No, I, uh, safety forces are gonna meet tomorrow. Uh they don't see any, any issues. No, you know, we've talked a little bit, you know, here and there, but uh we think we're gonna get through it just fine. But um, you know, hammer out the details. Chief will post a um, you know, the parking and the routes and all that for the exits like we did last year. And I think that'll work. And sure, he'll contact uh Tim with any questions.
Any other questions or comments? Yeah, we call the role.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
This time we'll move the agenda to the manager's report. Lance.
Okay, thank you. Wanted to thank Connie, did she leave? She left. That was a, we planned that about three seconds before you started the meeting. So uh we weren't real sure that we were gonna be able to get the uh, the slideshow up. But uh really appreciate that. I just think it's great to have uh the third graders involved. We just uh learned last week that the eighth graders and the high school students that we mentioned that went over to Carnegie. They were featured on um Pittsburgh paper. It's called uh the Gazette two point O. And I think that was in your packet. So um, you know, we're getting the third graders ready for that eighth grade class coming up. So uh I think it's just so, so valuable to see this, you know, to get the students engaged. Especially working with the historical society and get the, getting them to learn about the, the community. And it's, it's kind of crazy how things are crossing paths. Almost that, that same picture that was shown of the plaza uh is in the high school students entrepreneur classes presentation. And they wanna try to kind of uh spiff that up a little bit, if you will. And that's what they're working on. So it, it'll, it'll be really cool to see the um third graders out there to uh witness what's gonna happen uh out there at the um, at the Columbiana Plaza. So we did, we did get a uh, we did get the grant to do uh two pieces of artwork that we're gonna hang on Holloway Building. Should have that done midsummer. The students were just finishing up. I think they were working on it up to their last day that they were here, uh you know, when they graduated. So um, you know, it's, it's good to see and we're gonna, we're, we're working through that right now. And then um we're, we're hoping to get the uh the improvements to the uh, the actual parking lot done, which will kind of make the plaza itself more accessible to Main Street, you know, feel more like Main Street. So we're hoping to do that. It's looking like it's gonna be late summer, early fall that we'll be able to get to do that or transition that, that whole parking lot over. And it'll have kind of a path right down the center of it to the, to the Columbiana Plaza. So it's really nice to get the youth engaged. Um Nicole Ice uh had let me know this morning that the Columbiana corridor, remember when we put that, we put that on uh Google Maps. It has gotten fifty thousand views since its inception. So these things do matter. Lots, lots of people do check them out. So can't wait to see what the numbers are gonna be for the, the new uh images that we're gonna hang on the wall. Uh which we, I think I showed you at the last meeting, so. Okay, so getting back to tonight's business, uh we did open the truck accessories bids and uh the uh, we noticed that the lowest bid did not provide quotes on the specific equipment. So we're asking you to consider, we rejected that one based on market review the bids. And we did reject that, but we're going to use the next one. So that's uh on the agenda. We did open the bids for lime gap lime uh for the water plant and fuel for the city. And that's on the legislation. Notice the uh storm crews are still out uh working on the Beverly Ray in the Prospect Street Stormwater Project, which uh we're very excited. It's uh, and it's been a long time coming on those projects. We have an implementation meeting with uh FEMA coming up. And then um hopefully we can start working on that third uh Stormwater Project Grant that we uh, we were just awarded. Which is a court herbster. So that'll take care of those three areas. And we're gonna have people uh walking around there uh with survey equipment um for the foreseeable future. I did attend a couple of meetings uh at the county to discuss the art grant that we've been talking about. Uh specifically, I'm on the committee for the trail and the downtown revitalization. And we're, we're moving through that as a county together. And really, we're looking, the consultants that are helping us are looking to link up with other counties and kind of make it a regional project. So it's gonna be very interesting how that uh works out. But uh as our community, I think we're ready for, you know, several of the projects. And I think they'll rank well. We'll just see how it work, see how it goes. We have been watching the electric grid closely. Uh it was getting hot there last week. We thought we might have a energy savings day, but that did not turn out to, to be. So that was good. Uh the Memorial Day Parade services were great. Uh Danny did a wonderful job on the program. And Rick's welcoming message was well received and it was nice to, nice to see the flyby also. Uh Josh Manning's latest premiere was amazing. It was um pretty packed theater and um it's a really, really great presentation how they did it and they have the Vindys there. Highlight the soundtrack was, was awesome. So it's a, it's a proud moment in Columbiana. It was a fun night. So hopefully there will be many more of those nights. Oh, the pool's open. Uh opening weekend went well. It's, pool's been very busy. Uh we, the city crews have been working on the uh grinding the various streets. Uh so we have, since the last meeting, we've ground the streets and uh started paving this week. As you can see, uh South Main Street's done. And then we've, we're gonna got some stuff to do on uh Sixth Streets. And then uh Duquesne and then out at Cimarron. And the questions are always asked, how, why do we do certain roads? We, we evaluate all of our roads all the time. We have kind of like a, a map. You know, we, we plan these out uh years in advance and uh, you know, you have to stay on it. We have over forty-nine miles of roads that we have to take care of. So it's a never ending process. But uh this year, it looks like we're, you know, doing a lot of, a lot of paving. And that matches uh right up uh well with uh Cedar Run paving that was, happened to be the final code out there for uh sections uh one and two, with, which we've been waiting on a long time. And then uh we figured it made sense to do Bittersweet again. Uh and we had um, we had cut that road up the last time we, right after the last time we had paved it. So uh it'll be, should be a nice out there, so. Uh it's that time of year again for the local government funding legislation and both of those are on the agenda. Park Board, uh actually Tim Reeson, Park Board, talk about the updating the cancellation policy on the reservations. So we're simply moving that from forty-eight hours to two weeks uh to give us a little bit more time to fill that rather than getting canceled forty-eight hours out. May do and notice some um action around Paxton's um Village Garage site uh that those tanks are removed and that site's coming along pretty well. And they're, they're putting in some final stages, uh test wells. They're gonna be in um a couple alleys around that uh over the next week. And, and hopefully we can um, you know, get that turned in something. It's a vibrant business for our downtown. The dog park is uh looking great. It'll be opening soon. The grass is coming in nicely. So um I think they're gonna just kind of have a, kind of a soft opening over the next few weeks. I'm not exactly sure when. But uh it's uh been out there and visited it. It's, it's huge. It's, it's a very large uh dog park and it's got two sides. One for smaller dogs and one for larger dogs. And we also have water out there. And uh it'll be a very nice addition to the park. So thank you, Mr. McBane, for everything that you've done for that. And I know that you uh, you go to various dog parks, right? I called you one day and you were, you were at one, when I, when I called you, so.
Yeah, we have a very large dog park uh up in Wisconsin that we go to. It's uh I think it's over three acres. It takes, if you walk around it three times, you walk a mile.
Oh, wow.
So, yeah, that's big. Yeah.
Okay, so moving on to patched, we patched some water cuts and potholes. Um used sixteen tons of material. Of course, it's all hands, hands on deck. All the departments have been helping with the paving and the grindings. Not exactly sure this next, this next uh piece of data. But um I know it's not more than a month old, but I don't know if it's two weeks old. We had a hundred and twenty-eight dig locates since, since our reported last. Hundred and twenty-eight times that how utilities protection were called. And our electric, water, sewer, street had to go out there and mark. So what that tells us is there's lots of action going on, lots of construction going on. Whether it be, you know, out near Wendy's or, you know, our own sewer line projects or gas line projects or, you know, various, various projects throughout the city. So it's, it's um pretty much takes uh our departments, you know, each morning, that's, that's what they have to do. They have to go out and move, you know, mark these uh, these projects, especially as they move along uh to uh make sure that uh they're done safely. So but uh that's, that's a lot of locates. So it, it happens automatically. It comes into our uh emails and goes out to the various departments all at once. Uh we installed uh twenty-four meters, uh completed backflow surveys. We've done seventy-one of them uh for this year, which is a, I think it's probably a record. Uh finished and published uh consumer confidence report and that, that is on, online. Uh it's on our website as well as that uh presentation that we just saw from the third graders. That's on our website. And uh also we have a link to the historical society on our website. And uh lots of features are coming to the historical's website. So that's um, that should be cool. Uh let's see, we fixed two service pumps. Uh our cap continued with their potholing. Uh we replaced the motor uh to the drain well. We removed approximately one point three million gallons of lime slash sludge uh from the lagoons uh since um last meeting. Waste Water Department, uh, they did help excavate several holes for several different apartments, whether it be electric or uh, streets or water. Uh, they serviced uh, some roof fans there. We did run our trouble spots with the sewer machine. And our electric department had to help them pull several pumps over the last few weeks to uh, have them serviced. Park and Cemetery, they finished painting the pole. They opened the pole. And of course, they mowed and trimmed, and uh, they've been helping the street department uh, with the milling process and the paving process. Uh, electric department, they did hook up the Salem Regional Medical Center Surgical Center. Uh, it is uh, it's all hooked up now. And uh, they've been working on the flowers and the flags. Uh, got the flags hung and flowers hung. Flowers are being automatically watered. And uh, just said that they helped uh, Waste Water Department uh, pull some pumps. And I believe that's everything I have.
Thank you, Lance.
Welcome.
I would indicate that the mayor's court report of April twenty twenty three is in the packet or submitted, so please review that. Any questions on that report? Otherwise, it'll be accepted. And you also received a copy of the bill list of June sixth, twenty twenty three. Is there any questions on the bill list? Hearing none, we will, I would entertain a motion to read all ordinances and resolutions by title only.
So move.
Second.
Motion second. Do you have any color roll?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, business ordinance number twenty three dash O dash three one eight one, second reading. An ordinance to make more permanent what has been a temporary extension and expansion of ordinance number nineteen dash O dash two nine nine seven. The latter of which created a designated outdoor refreshment area, Dora, and enacted the same within the city of Columbia.
So move.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions or comments? Do you have any color roll?
Yes.
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 Assistant?
Yes.
New business. Ordinance number twenty three dash O dash three one eight two, first reading. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into contract with Greer, a Lime Company, a division of Greer Industries, Inc., five nine eight Canyon Road, Greer Mansion, Morgantown, West Virginia, two six five oh eight, for the purchase of lime for the lime for the water treatment plant.
So move.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions on that motion?
Is this the same company that we had trouble getting lime last year?
Yeah, that was this year. Um, yeah, so we we have been through it, but um, we think that they've got it figured out, so. Crossing our fingers.
Okay.
Yep.
Good question.
Yep.
Good memory.
Yep.
Other questions? Do you have any color roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Yes.
Ordinance number twenty three dash O dash three one eight three, first reading. An ordinance off, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Light and Oil Company, thirty seven eleven Lee Harp's Road, Youngstown, Ohio, four four five one five for the purchase of gasoline and diesel fuel.
Tomo.
Second.
Questions on the motion? Yeah, we call the roll?
Yes.
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 Ordinance number twenty three dash O dash three one eight four, first reading. An ordinance, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Gleadhill Road Machinery Company, seven six five Portland Way, South Galion, Ohio, four four eight three three, for the purchase of truck bed, snowplow equipment and salt kit accessories for the street department's Western Star Dump Truck.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Questions on the motion? Yeah, we call the roll?
Yes.
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 Ordinance number twenty three dash O dash three one eight five, first reading. An ordinance amending section ten sixty two point zero seven B four of section ten sixty two point oh sev- zero seven of the codified ordinance of Columbia, Ohio, regarding rental rates in the recreation park and repealing all other ordinances in conflict therewith.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion second. Any questions on this motion? Yeah, we call the roll?
Yes.
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 Resolution number twenty three dash R dash six two one, first reading. A resolution to exclude the approval of the city of Salem, which approval would otherwise be required for an alternate method of apportionment of local government fund monies to be distributed in twenty twenty four.
So move.
Second.
Second. Any questions or comments? Yeah, we call the roll?
Yes.
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 Last but not least, resolution number twenty three dash R dash six two two, first reading. Resolution approving a new alternative method of apportionment of local government fund monies to be distributed in twenty twenty four.
So moved. Second.
Motion second is, great question. Yeah, we call the roll?
Yes.
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 Hey, um, in a moment, I'm gonna be requesting a motion go into executive session. Uh, and there will be no business conducted after that executive session. So uh, I'd like to take the opportunity now to give anybody an opportunity out there. Anybody wanna make any comments or suggestions or recommendations or whatever?
Yes. I thought maybe you talked about this in previous meetings, but I love the birdhouses, the real firestone park. The whole project.
Very good.
It needs to be the same. That's great. It's worth the drive.
Thanks, Susan. That's a good comment. Good comment.
Yeah, it was another good school project and uh, I think uh, Kim Sharshan was here and she talked about it along with fix the sticks, uh, the uh, small replica that they made of with popsicle sticks.
There's so many unique things in our park. It's good to point those out. I think that's excellent. Any other comments? Hearing none, I'd like to ask council members, do you have any comments or?
Uh, two things. Wanted to comment on the Josh Manning film that we saw here just recently. That was uh, that was, that was a great film. He's uh, he's really got it together. He's he's on top of it. And the special needs kids. Uh, the play that they put on was unbelievable. Those kids, man, they get into it. It's it's really heartwarming to see them up there laughing and just getting out of their comfort zone and making making us proud of them. And uh, I'll mention once again, I think everybody knows this, but they are the reason that we are the nicest city in America, two thousand nineteen.
Uh, to see the Josh Manning film is so cool to watch because Columbia is used in a number of different places, and you go, oh, I know where that is. It's kind of fun to see, because I do that too, and then my wife says, shut up. And um, he is becoming a very talented, gifted uh, you know, film producer. So it's kind of fun to watch that happen and take advantage of our community to use for a backdrop for his presentation. Very good. Any other comments?
I just wanted to say that um, hats off to the uh, Wine Fest uh, committee that had a very successful uh, week or week weekend event uh, on on Saturday. It was a great day. I think it's probably a record. I'm guessing it looked like a record, but I think everybody had a great time and there're, you know, lots of food trucks out there and few new wineries and it was very well attended. And I was most impressed by the 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 young generation that was there uh, that that was uh, you know, that attended. So it was a a pretty young crowd.
Yeah, I thought it was amazing that it's, it just spanned the globe as far as ages were concerned. There was no like all old people or middle aged wine drinkers, anything like that. It was just I saw, I saw a four year old. Is there a number uh, people that they?
I heard around thousand.
I hadn't.
They had six, over six hundred pre-sale tickets, and they estimate a little under a thousand. In attendance.
And that event has come a long way because you remember the the first couple of years that it was out at the Legion, you know? It was um, you and I worked the tent together, I think, and uh, you know, it's it's totally different now. It's it's um, you know, everybody wants to be there. Before it was, you know, we're trying to of course, it was, it was something new back then, so.
I remember the one year at the Legion when there were six inches of rain during the event.
The Tourism Bureau does a fantastic job. There were great volunteers that helped out. In fact, if you went to the event, you would notice that the volunteers had a certain T-shirt on, and when you looked out in the crowd, you knew nobody. I mean, the event is bringing all these people in from other communities, and it's, I think it's really great, you know, them to, you know, be able to experience Columbia. It's really good. Uh, but it was a good event. Any other comments? Okay, hearing none, I would entertain a motion uh, to go into executive session for the purchase discussion of purchase of property section one twenty one point twenty two G two.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Yeah, we call the roll?
Yes.
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 Thank you all. Very emotional to come out of the executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, we call the roll?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
We have motion to adjourn.
So moved.